Okay, we're gonna call this budget workshop to order.
Do we still do the pledge and everything?
No.
No, okay. Okay, so we're here to discuss the 2014-2015 budget, and let's hear from the county administrator.
Madam Chairman, thank you very much, and thanks to the board. I wish to thank the board for allowing us to have this budget workshop. I'd like to point out that, once again, the county has posted the entire county budget on the county's website to provide greater transparency and accountability in county government. What will be presented to you today is an accumulation of hard work, coordination and cooperation by staff, and especially by the elected officials alike. Without the elected officials' leadership and commitment, we couldn't have accomplished the level of cooperation and achievement which has resulted in a superior work product that we're gonna be presenting. And thank you personally for all your efforts and cooperation. Lastly, in addition to all the hard work by the departments and the divisions, I'd like to thank John Timko and his fantastic finance team for all the heavy lifting for the upcoming, for coming up with this very successful game plan which has brought us here and where we are today. This budget workshop is scheduled to have five components. As a kickoff, I'll provide you with a brief overview of the budget process to date, and from there, John Timko will provide you with a brief financial state of the county along with what to expect in the way of scheduling for our pathway to budget adoption. This will be followed by those elected officials and department heads wishing to do so to have an opportunity to come before the board to address any questions or concerns they have with the budget being proposed. And next, there will be a call to the public to obtain public comment from the floor. Lastly, the board will have an opportunity to discuss the proposed budget. But as a recap of the process to date, by the end of January, Mr. Timko had prepared our revenue estimates and his staff had started budget preparations. At the beginning of February, we received the assessed valuations for FY14 that was set by the assessor. On February 14th, our Internal Services Department of IT Communications, Janitorial, Fleet, and Fleet had submitted their budgets so that they could be included with the budget submissions from the rest of the departments. At your March 3 meeting, the board adopted a per parcel charge rate for special districts. On March 5th, we held our budget kickoff meeting for all departments, distributing the budget packets and budget instructions. On March 21st, budgets were due and received from all departments, with financial staff reviewing all departments' requests during the month of April. April 28 through May 9th, Mr. Timko and I met with each department to review their budget requests. May 22nd, finance staff finalized a recommended county budget for all county departments. May 15 through May 27th, Mr. Timko and I met with each supervisor to provide a general review of the recommended budgets and to work on their budgets with them, and that brings us to today's workshop. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to John Timko. Thanks, John.
Thank you, Mike. Madam Chairman, members of the board, it's my pleasure to present to you, for your consideration, the staff recommendation for the fiscal year 2014-2015 budget. As Mike just pointed out, this process began last January and will continue through mid-August. This is the 13th budget that I've prepared for the county, and like the prior 12 would not have been possible without the incredible assistance from my staff and the finance department. And I'd also like to add my appreciation to Mike's, to the elected officials and department heads for an incredible level of cooperation this year in arriving at a balanced budget. As we've discussed previously, we begin the budget process with our best effort to predict available revenues for the new fiscal year. The budget before you has assumed no rate increases for any of the property taxes levied by the board, despite the fact that the assessed valuation for the county has decreased for the fifth consecutive year. In fact, this year's assessed valuation represents a 31.8% drop from the level that we assessed in 2009. Now, maintaining the FY14 levy rate that you approved of at 1.8196 per hundred will result then because of the lower valuation in property tax revenues that will be reduced $793,000 from what we have in the current fiscal year. On the brighter side, modest increase in the sales tax and the fee income generated by our departments. Sales tax, the Department of Revenue estimates will increase about $219,000. Our automobile lieu tax, about $153,000. And the fee income generated by the departments will also show an increase of about $444,000. We also had to include in the budget major increases to our expenses. We have a two-year cycle on elections, and every other year, we hit about $600,000 increase in costs for the cost of doing the elections. This is an election year, so we had to budget that. Also, this administration building that we're in will be paid off on July 1st. The result of that for the general fund will be that we need to pick up the operating and maintenance costs of this building and the general fund, which previously had been included in our lease payments. And that was the challenge we faced in directing the departments to prepare their request for FY15. And in order to accomplish this, the departments were instructed to increase base budgets with no increase in general fund. New initiatives, capital, equipment were requested to be restricted to those which were legally mandated, necessary for life safety reasons, or those which could be funded by offsetting reductions in other areas of the department's budgets. And we had excellent cooperation from all the departments and are able to present a balanced budget to the general fund with no requirement for a tax increase. Now, while we presented a balanced budget which doesn't require any property tax increase, the staff recognizes that this budget leaves many valid requests unfunded. And we are proposing that a levy rate be increased by 2 cents per hundred in order to fund these new initiatives. In doing so, while the levy rate would increase, the total dollars levied for the primary property tax would still be reduced by $450,000. Your approval for this rate increase would fund having the county pick up 50% of the increases in the health insurance, which had been transferred primarily to the employees this year. There are reclassifications of positions in the Sheriff's Department and the probation Department relative to encouraging better staff retention in the Sheriff's situation as the dispatchers, and in the probation department, the probation officers, which would be solved by creating a lead deputy probation officer position and changing those classifications. We also would suggest that the Legal Defender's Office needs an additional secretary to help them with the large increase in dependency cases. The governor just in special session created another $60 million for their department to generate dependency cases for our county. This secretary would be able to pick up a lot of the clerical work that currently is being shouldered by attorneys just because of the workload. We'd also recommend the addition of a new office clerk and an attorney in the Public Defender's Office, again, to handle the incredible increase in the juvenile dependency caseloads. Those are the primary issues that we would suggest be funded by this 2-cent increase, and again, that's entirely at the discretion of the board. We have a balanced budget that does not include these, but with a 2-cent increase, we could fund these. The county administrator and I have met with each of you individually to discuss priorities which you would like to have funded in this budget, and at this time, you have the opportunity to discuss in a workshop format what you want to do with those and direct staff to include those ideas or not in the tentative budget which you will consider at your July 7 meeting. This is also appropriate time for any of you, if you have questions of the staff about the staff recommendation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, here's where we have the opportunity for comments from elected officials first. Anybody want to speak to the board? Elected? Come on down.
Good afternoon, Chairman Angus and Board. I wanted to just discuss the issue in my office. I am requesting that you grant me the opportunity to have staff positions in my office evaluated, which in turn will give me the opportunity to change job description and adjust salary rates as applicable, based on independent evaluation, not outside of the county, and performance, and no additional overall cost, budget costs to taxpayers. The county talks a great deal about critical services to our county residents and visitors, which include law enforcement, flood protection, health, roads, and other services. Indeed, these are important and critical and must be properly funded on a timely basis. The Treasurer's Office calculates bills, prepares statements, collects and allocates the annual Mojave County property taxes, which amounted to over $180 million for the fiscal year of 2013. The Treasurer also calculates and allocates county, state, and federal funds for education, fire, and emergency protection for our schools, fire departments, and several hundred other districts, which provide special services. In total, the Treasurer's Office collects, manages, and distributes over $370 million annually on behalf of our Mojave County residents and visitors. Our staff positions of 17.5 full-time employees, consisting of 18 individuals, are financially responsible for annually processing millions of accounting transactions related to just shy of 270,000 parcels, over 350,000 tax payments because of the half and half payments. Each tax payment averages 10 separate allocations to districts, over 6,600 miscellaneous treasury receipts from other departments and other areas, and over 70,000 warrants issued by county districts. The Treasurer's Office should be at least be considered as critical and important as other county service organizations, such as the Assessor's Office, Finance, Procurement, or the Recorder's Office, all whom we interact with and support. Using the recommended expenditures provided by the county for budget year 2014-15, I calculated the average department salary by dividing the department's salary wages line by the funded FTEs, and the Treasurer's Office employees are paid annual salaries that are 22% lower than the Assessor's Department, 23% lower than the Finance Department, 27% lower than the Procurement Department, and 9% lower than the Recorder's Department. The Treasurer's Office has no specialist categories. We have no specialist accountants of any kind, even though a majority of the positions that we have require varying levels of financial accounting knowledge and broad responsibility for financial accuracy. The staff positions are currently two office clerks, 10 office assistants, and five office assistant seniors, and one halftime microfilm person. The Treasurer's Office was not able to recognize merit or excellent performance this past fiscal year, with the countywide 2.5% pay increase directed to go to employees based on existing salary. I argued on behalf of allowing managers to direct the pay increase to those determined as star performers and more deserving to no avail. In fact, four employees received none of this 2.5% because of recent promotions associated with minimal raise increases because of the low wage of the positions I have. Many employees who received the highest blanket increases were far from star performers. This is a perfect example of rewarding adequate or average behavior instead of superstar performance, in my opinion. These conditions greatly contribute to why we have lost three employees in less than six months to other county departments, including two of our newest, brightest employees. This is a poor reflection on the county that the Treasurer's Office, a high-profile office, has high employee turnover rate and continuously loses our best employees to other county departments. One of our losses is in April, was a critical accounting position and involved with the implementation of our new computer system. This employee moved to another county department for a 32% salary rate increase and position title change to account specialist, although the same basic scope and tasks are being performed as she performed in the Treasurer's Office. With a significant number of technological improvements and operational changes, we are compelled to raise the expectations for performance in the Treasurer's Office. This comes at a great deal of training and expense, but will greatly improve our efficiency, which in turn will improve the county's image in the public's eye. This can only be achieved with high qualified employees that I'm afforded the ability to retain. I implore you that you allow me to have these positions evaluated, which will afford me the opportunity to increase salaries within the department to deserving employees based on independent evaluation and performance at no additional overall budget costs to And the way that I propose making that happen is leaving the requested budget that we asked for and not reducing it. It was $11,600 to overall in the salary wages line for a total with benefits and everything of $16,000 that we asked for that is not being recommended, and the travel expenses that were reduced by $6,000 because I intend to use those travel expenses, although I didn't use all of what was budgeted in this last fiscal year, and that's the reason why it was lowered from $9,000 that we asked for to $3,000, which is being recommended, because I need to train my people. And I have a training line for that, and I need travel expenses to send them to training, and not just for Tyler training, for training period. Because if we want high-level people to be educated in our department, we need to be able to train them.
Is that it?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
Yes, Ms. Cox.
Did you have an opportunity this last year to address some of the security concerns that you've got in your office?
Yes.
Are they all completed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other elected officials who wish to speak? Nobody? Okay. Now we have the courts. Anyone from the courts?
Good afternoon, Chairman Angus, supervisors. Thank you for this opportunity. On behalf of presiding Judge Gertler, he's in a trial today and couldn't attend, so thanks for extending or continuing the other motion on the Capitol project. That would probably give Judge Gertler a chance to attend for that. But I just wanted, on behalf of the Superior Court, and perhaps speaking for Verlentinell too, on the clerk of the court, we've very much appreciated the budget process these last two years and again this year with County Administrator Hendricks and Mr. Timko. We appreciate the opportunity to visit, the openness, the good discussion and flow. We support the budget that they've proposed. We appreciate their recommendations for some of the positions that we were looking at that we felt were critical, and we feel that with what we have, we didn't get everything that we would have liked, but we certainly recognize that there's still a tight budget and we have to live within some of those means, but we appreciate what was recommended and we support it. As was mentioned, the dependency filings have been increasing tremendously. We're keeping a close eye on those as well and hoping that we've seen a little bit of a slowdown, so we're hopeful that it'll slow down some. But with what the state's doing, we recognize that'll probably continue pushing forward. So we're keeping a close eye on those things, but we believe with the budget that has been presented, we will be able to make it through this next year and be successful as well. We look forward to the construction project that's coming in Bullhead City. I know that'll be on the board, hopefully, in the next meeting. We're appreciative of the support with those projects as well. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but we're supportive and look forward to another successful year. Thank you.
Okay, any questions? Thank you. Anyone else from courts? Okay, now off to department heads. Who wants to go first? Susie? No? No, don't want to talk? Anyone? Wow, everyone's happy.
This is too easy.
All right. So if no one from the county wants to speak, I will open it up for public comments. No? Wow.
That, I think, reflects what a wonderful job the staff and everyone has put into this process and the cooperation of everyone in the entire Mojave County.
That's true. This is the best opportunity to take this time to thank everybody. You know, it's been a kind of a roller coaster couple of years, and we had some hits and some last-minute information about monies that we thought we were gonna have that we were not. So I really appreciate everyone being flexible and working with the county to get this budget in place and that's workable and still make the taxpayers happy as well. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Please.
Yeah, I would like to echo your comments and Supervisor Watson's comments. From my personal experiences of the last year and a half of being on the board, I have to say that County Administrator Hendricks and his team have been extremely professional, extremely competent, competent, excuse me, and when I have brought issues to their attention, both of financial issues and other more public policy issues, they have been extremely quick and decisive in dealing with those things that they could deal with and informing me of those things they could not. And I really want to give them some kudos here because they thoroughly deserve it.
Yes, I agree. It's been a lot of changes and new people, and I feel like I've been kept up and notified all the way and just couldn't be happier with the performance of our administrative staff all the way, just not the budget, but all the way around. And I think it shows in the mood of the county and in the count of the county, and I just want to say thanks again.
Thank you.
Please.
Is it time for board discussion with staff?
I guess it would be. It is time for board discussion with staff.
If I may?
Please.
Thank you, Chairman. Just have a couple of questions, and we discussed at the meeting earlier today, $1.5 million from the general fund to the building fund. Is that... You want to go ahead and address that?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Supervisor Watson, what staff would ask, because that was not voted on today, is some direction on whether you want that included in the staff recommendation for the tentative budget. Just so you understand a little bit about the rules of the game, July 7th, we will present a tentative budget, which you can amend or adopt, or amend and adopt. But the key is that what you approve for the tentative budget, you cannot exceed that amount in the final budget.
Final budget, correct.
And so we would like direction as to whether you would like us to include this $1.5 million transfer to a building fund for FY15. It can be taken out later, but it can't be added later.
Can't be added in, and that's the point I'm making. If we go ahead and include it now, then if necessary, we can take it out later.
That's correct.
And do you want me to make each suggestion a motion to...
I know.
I'm not sure we can make motions here, but if we can get a general feeling that that's where you want to do.
Yeah.
Okay. Then I'd like to just make one statement. It is incredible, simply incredible, from the years 2009 to the year 2014, that we've seen a 31% decrease in our valuations, and I'm hope we have hit the bottom of the situation and the scenario will continue no longer. But I realize how difficult it's been for all the departments, all the elected officials to come forth with this budget, knowing that at some point in time down the road, we'll have to be facing an adjustment to the tax rate. It's not a tax increase, but it's a rate change. But at this point, I'd just like to say thank you, wonderful job. The only other item that I wanted to bring forth today was, when we gave the employees 2.5% pay increase last year, I believe there are many as 40 of our employees now will be dropped from that 2.5% as of this next pay period?
The one after.
The one after. And I think it's unfair to those folks that although they've reached the maximum on the scale, are penalized by the 2.5% that they would no longer receive. Do we have the opportunity now to put that in the budget and then take it out later if my colleague decided to do so?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Watson, yes, that would be the appropriate way to handle it, I think. Let me point out, though, that the pay raise as it was passed last year at this time for the 2.5% increase was passed with conditions. Those conditions expire for these 40 people. You won't adopt a budget until August that would include a retribution for that if it were cleared. So two options would be, one would be to address this issue at your next meeting in June, which we just changed to the 23rd.
Right there.
If you address it then, then there would be no break for the employees if it's approved. If you wait until, you don't approve the tentative budget until July 7th, so even then, we would need to wait till August the 8th, when we adopt the final budget, to make that happen. So there's just two choices on how you'd want to go. We could make it retroactive if we do it in August, but there would be a break.
I guess what I was trying to do is double down.
Sure.
Fine. I'd like to put it in the budget and then also bring it up on the 23rd, because if we bring it up on the 23rd, then it would be uninterrupted. If it doesn't pass on the 23rd, it would be in the budget. Yeah. If it were done in the budget. So I would suggest that we go ahead and put it in the budget.
Well, can we just do that now? Because this is just a workshop. I thought we could do things.
A tentative. I'm sorry. Madam Chairman, Supervisor Watson, I think we can do it similar to what was just proposed with the $1.5 million building fund. It could be included and then it could be withdrawn when you all vote for the budget. We'll just earmark that so that you're aware that that's in the proposal, and it will be something that we will bring to your attention to actually take official action on.
But just putting it in so we can talk about it and deal with it, but nothing happens until we vote.
We'll put it in for discussion.
Perfect.
Right, put it in for discussion. But also, there you go.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that our 40 employees understand that we're aware of the situation and that we're trying to address that situation. That's my intent.
I'm sure we'll be talking about that. We also talked at our regular meeting about these refunds from these lawsuits. One of them is this Transwestern, but we have another one too. Have we made accommodations for that? Should we... And I hear, how I understand, is the next one possibly be more?
Madam Chairman, in that regard, we currently have in excess of $13 million in surplus contingency funds in the general fund, which we had intended in our budget proposal to just have direction from the board as these become settled to pay them out of contingency. So the one that you settled this morning, I think, is probably gonna cost the general fund of the county about $300,000. I don't have the final figure you said either, but per my calculations, it's in that ballpark. That's something that we can certainly absorb within the contingency of the general fund.
Okay, and there's an issue in... Okay, and there's an issue, and it involves risk management. And there was some money that was in our account down at our ASEP, and that we were told we had to put it on our books. I want to know what that money, where it's landing. Is it going to stay for emergency, as I believe it should, or is it now going to be a general fund?
Madam Chairman, those funds will stay in the SIR fund, the Self-Inured Retention Fund, 100 percent. The question with the auditors was whether it was on our books or not, and now it is. I believe the cash is physically in the custody of the ASEP earmarked for us, and we can use that to either offset premium increases or to pay our premiums or in any other way that we direct them. But that is now on the books and in the budget.
Very good. Okay, Supervisor Moss?
No, I will say that I generally concur with everything I've heard from both you and Supervisor Watson so far. I do think it's a good idea to include both the building fund and the employee issue within the tentative budget, and then we can readdress it at the next meeting on that issue. I will say on the building fund issue, I really do, in my personal perspective, and I would encourage the county administration, at least from my perspective, obviously there would be other perspectives at play, but I really want to focus on making sure that the courthouse that is to be constructed is the one that is the more expansive, because by the time we go bare bones, by the time it's complete, it will already be obsolete. And I'd rather solve the problem once and for all for the foreseeable future, rather than just kicking the can down the road one more day. Also, when it comes to the building improvement issues, I really support the sheriff's substations being improved. I think those are both the original topics. The rest of it, I'm completely open on.
Okay. Is there anything else?
Madam Chairman, just another for staff direction. The proposed two-cent increase, what would the staff be directed as far as including or not including that in the tentative budget?
We're not making this decision now.
Madam Chairman, if I may?
Right.
Since I may have a split board on that particular issue, we'll treat it just like the other issues that were discussed. We'll go ahead and include it and then address it individually when the budget is adopted.
Yes, absolutely. And we'll have a couple more supervisors here.
Now, if I could, Madam Chair, when you said a two percent increase, does that deal with the employee salary issue?
What, the two cent?
Yes.
That's the... You saw the, there was a list of items that they recommended if we were to go with that direction, and they mostly had to do with things in the public defender's office, and yeah, some of them were salary issues.
Hold on a second.
That's what I'm getting at. Just clarify for the public's sake, we're not talking property tax increases, we're talking employee issues. Am I right about that or incorrect?
I'm confused about what your question is.
Well, I heard a two-cent increase. I wanted to make sure that we weren't talking property tax increases.
Yes, yes, we are.
And I'd like...
Well, okay.
Okay. This is just, remember, the staff made some recommendations, should we want to go that direction? That was what they would recommend to do with that, the money extra. It hasn't been decided yet.
Okay. And I'll go on the record then to say, just so staff have some idea where people may be at, is I'm personally opposed to any property tax increase whatsoever, and I think on some areas, we need to be looking at cuts, like the TV district. But that's just my personal position, but the staff can factor into their thinking however they please.
All right, okay.
If I may, thank you, Chairman Angus. I'd like to make a point of clarification that the two-cent adjustment to the property tax is not necessarily an increase. It is an adjustment to the rate, and it is not an increase, it's an adjustment to the rate. Whereas, say for an instance, probably it'd be better explained by you, John, but it's not an increase, it would be, in fact, just holding our own on the same dollar amount from this year to the next year. It's just an arithmetic... But John, if you'll take the floor.
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Watson, what you're saying is correct, and a rate increase from $1.81 to $1.83 would generate revenue to support these projects, but would still generate less tax collected by the county by $450,000 from what we're collecting this year. So a tax decrease would still occur even with a two-cent adjustment on the rate.
I understood again. It's always sort of the debate we go through about, it's not really an increase, but yes, it is, you know, should values go up?
Let me, if I can. If my tax bill is $10,000, and this year it goes down to $9,550 by no action, by an increase of two cents to the rate, which is just to the rate, next year I would be paying the same $10,000, and that's the only point that I'm trying to make.
Right, but when values do go up, they'll be reflected accordingly, you know, so...
Madam Chair, if I could?
Yes.
On this, this is how I view it. We're talking about taxing people's property ownership, and when the collections go down, that means the home or the business is losing value, they're losing wealth. So when they're losing value and they're losing wealth, and we increase the percentage so that our collections maintain constant, what we're actually doing is increasing a tax, because we're taking more of that wealth as a percentage basis than we would otherwise. So yes, we are collecting and maintaining the line when it comes to tax receipts, but only because we're raising taxes on less wealth. It's an algebraic equation, and it is a tax increase. So a tax increase on wealth. And I don't think it's necessarily something which will attract business and homeownership in Mojave County, Arizona, if we go down that road.
Okay, well, it's definitely something that we seem to debate every year, and this year is no different, but we'll be talking about it when we vote, yes.
And Madam Chairman, one of the things that we wanted to do for illustrative purposes for the board is, we knew there were some new initiatives that were being requested. What we presented to the board is, we believed, what we believed was a bare-bones budget that we budgeted to actual expenditures, in fact, less, you know, to actually come up with the, making the difference from the $700,000 deficit that we experienced last year and the $900,000 deficit from previous taxes that we're experiencing this year. So we presented you with no wiggle room. What we wanted to do is to try to put a face on these new initiative requests, and those new initiative requests can actually change. It depends on what the board's priority was, but we wanted to make it clear that those new initiatives came with a cost. And every, to give an example, every penny that was, that would, of increase in taxes would bring roughly $120,000 in revenue. So every penny that's increased, we would propose that if you wanted to fund new initiatives, you know, it would require an increase in the rates. It might be that the board would want to fund 50 percent of the insurance. Well, that's a little over a penny increase in tax rate. It might be that the board wants to provide these 40 employees with, that were at step 10 or near a step 10 and didn't get a raise, that sustained increase. Well, that's a fraction of a penny increase, but we wanted the board to know that each one of these, we would have to recommend an increase in taxes to fund.
Can I ask you, just for my own knowledge, when I saw that list of new initiatives, that wasn't all of them. I mean, did you, who chose that particular list?
Madam Chairman, that list was negotiated with the departments as we went through their budget. And there were new initiatives that were requested that we said we could not fund and still come up with a balanced budget, but we would include them in this list if we got a two-cent increase. To my knowledge, the only new initiatives in the general fund that were not funded other than this list, and the health insurance was not on anybody's new initiative, but that was a request from the board. The only new initiatives that were not included was the sheriff's request for new initiatives to give 4 percent increases across the board to his staff. I believe that all other new initiatives submitted by the departments, and again, we severely restricted what we wanted them to ask for because we knew we had a tough budget year. But with that one exception, I think these are the ones that were not funded in achieving a balanced budget. That's how the list came to be.
Supervisor Moss?
One more item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
John may have it off the tip of his tongue. As a percentage of our general fund budget, what are salaries projected to be? 56%?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Watson, typically 55%, 57%.
Okay.
And that includes the fringe benefits on those.
Okay, that's inclusive of our fringe?
We also spoke...
If I may, I just have one more question. What would be the average dollar amount that our employees are being hit with on the increase in the insurance or benefits? Would that be your... Do you recall?
Madam Chairman, my recollection is that that amount was around $400,000, $153,000 of it, I think, was picked up by the trust fund, which was the one-year premium that we had to pay for Obamacare, and the other 300, maybe, it seems to me it was like $350,000, was picked up by our employees, roughly 1,000 employees, roughly $35 a piece.
I guess what I'm trying to bring light is the fact that we are addressing the increase, and a major portion of it was assumed by the county and not the employees, and that's what I'm trying to point out.
Well, about three-fourths, one-fourth was the split on the total increase to the insurance program. When the EBT board met, they received input from all the providers and from the actuaries that told us what we needed to charge. Staff recommendation to the EBT board was to, since the employees had not had an increase on their share and the county had picked up all the increases over the past seven years, that this year, because of our budget situation, that we would have the employees have to share the burden of the increase. And so we split that about one-fourth, three-fourths.
Right. Okay, so our employees are picking...
This would move it closer to a half and half.
Right, so our employees are picking up approximately 25 percent of the increase instead of 100 or...
50 percent instead of 100 percent.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out that we're doing our very best to keep those expenses to our employees down, as far as we can.
Correct. Okay. Anything else? Well, this was faster than I thought, but thanks again for coming, and meetings adjourned.